You've said that already. Waiting for somebody to promote me. Host has promoted you. Hold the host again.
Good?
Yeah.
You guys are ready, I will kick things off. They're not cooperating with you?
Well, it's telling me it's not responding. I think that's because I just upgraded my regular subscription, so it's confused.
Does that mean you don't have to be on camera tonight? Okay. All right, you want me to get going here and you'll sort that out?
Yeah, oh yeah.
All right, good evening for this evening's select board meeting Tuesday, February 4th. As always, this meeting is being held in hybrid format. The select board will stay in person. Members of the public, I can see out there, are attending here in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so. Go to the Medfield webpage, go right to the calendar. You'll see we've got our meeting on tonight, the Zoom link is right there. And if you do not have access to computer, there is a dial-in number. And then the link for the info package, you can follow along with what we'll be doing here this evening. Is there your availability? I do want to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded. So we will get things together, call the order. But before we start, let's take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. Kickoff tonight, the first appointment is Beta Engineering to provide an update on the 27 West intersection redesign. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Madam Chair, for the record, my name is Ken Ho with Beta Group. We're the consultant for the improvement of the intersection of West Street and Route 27. So if you recall, the last time when I was here, you know, I went over briefly the project schedule. So at the time, we had indicated that we would submit the ICE 2 form sometimes in December, which we did in early December, and that we would expect comments back from DOT sometime early January, and which we did. And so at this time, we have addressed all the comments. So what I thought the best way to present the information is to provide a matrix summarizing what we submitted and also the results based on DOT comments. So with that, Frank, if you could maybe share the matrix? I have made a few hard copies for the board, if you could see it on the screen. But otherwise, you know, feel free to.
Thank you.
Just trying to zoom in for a second here, Ken, sorry.
Yeah, sure, it's all right.
It must be an engineering firm to have paper this large.
And one more, which way do we go with this?
Great, thank you, Mark.
Oh, okay.
So what you have on the screen, on the hard copy of paper is, there are two rows. The first row, where I have called the regional, that's the information that was provided in the ICE 2 form. And then at the bottom, it says updated. So those are the information where we have updated and addressed mass DOT comments. So I'll just walk through it very quickly. And, you know, so while we have addressed all the comments provided by DOT, there remains one, which is at the very end of the form, where they have wanted us to identify a preferred intersection control strategy. And that's the only box that we haven't filled out. And hopefully, and that's the reason why we're here today, as to, you know, what we should put in that box essentially. I'll just walk through the results, and then we can perhaps, you know, conclude on what the design option is for the intersection. So if you look at the first column on the original, where it says capital cost, and that's the dollar amount for both the design and the construction of the design option alternative, which in this case is a signalized intersection or roundabout. So in the case of capital cost, which is about 2.5 million for the intersection and a 3.8 for the roundabout. So that doesn't change with the updated, because that stays the same. The next column, which DOT in the ICE form, is they would estimate what's the operation and maintenance cost for if we go with a traffic signal versus roundabout. And in this case, you're looking at the traffic light, which is a lower, what, $300,000? And for the roundabout, it's about $210,000. And that stays the same even with, you know, the updated version of it. Now, in terms of the, right away, which I could get into a little more, but what we have shown here is the permanent easement, that's property. Okay, what are the property, the land that's impacted? But I can dive into a little more, because right away, it also consists of the property taking and also the utility easement. This is as DOT, where if there's a wire that crosses a property, they want to make sure that we obtain property within five feet to make sure that the butter doesn't build anything underneath the wire. So there's that. And then there's also temporary easement, which is required temporarily during constructions. You know, someone that needs to get access to a private property to construct, whether it's a sidewalk and whatnot, and that's usually approximately five feet away from the construction project limit. So, but in this case, we have highlighted the property. So originally, we have 7,600, and then roundabout is 9,400. This is the property easement permanent. And with the updated, the traffic signal stays the same. Now, the roundabout went up higher because, and I'll explain this. One of the comment that DOT had asked is, your concept that we submitted shows that there's going to be some impact on the parking lot at the property of 67 West Street. You know, if you guys, if you're familiar, that's across from the pet hospital, and that's where the, you know, my gym, children places and all that. So what we have done is, as part of the updated model to address mass duty comment, is to try to shift the roundabout towards west to minimize, you know, the parking lot in that area. So by shifting that, we're actually increasing a little of the property taking. So we just wanted, you know, just wanted to be clear, so we did what mass DOT had asked us to do. So that's approximately 10,000 square feet. Now, keep in mind, we're still at 10% design, okay, of the project, whether it's a signal or the roundabout. And we're trying very hard not to do too much, because we don't know which option we're going with, because we don't want to be wasting money, you know, diving into the detail of the design and whatnot at this point. So I just want to make sure I emphasize that the design is 10% conceptual level. The next column has to do with the overall traffic operation capacities. So basically, what we submitted at the time, the analysis shows 40 seconds delay for traffic light and a 16-second delay. So that's equivalent to a level service C for the roundabout and the D for a traffic light. So if you're familiar with grading of a traffic signal, like, you know, levels A through F. F is basically failing, where you have to wait at a traffic light for more than, you know, 50 seconds. So when we, Mass DOT had some comments on the analysis, so we fine-tuned it basically with the updated. It shows us 43 seconds for the traffic light and 12.9 seconds for the roundabout, a level service D and a B respectively. In terms of safety, again, Mass DOT, the ICE form, they equate safeties into the dollar amount, you know, like, has to do with crash injury and all that detail. So based on the original what we submitted, it's about 6 million for the traffic light and then a 2.1 million for the roundabout. Now, DOT had asked us, one of the comment was, when you do your safety analysis, we use basically a crash monitoring factor, they call CMF. So what we have done is, we have used the clearinghouse CMF, because they have the turbo roundabout concept, which mimics what we are designing. So that's what we have shown regionally. But DOT came back and said, wait a second, how come you didn't use our CMF factors? Because DOT had somehow calibrated and come up with their own, you know, still based on the CMF clearinghouse that, you know, the industry used. So they came up with their factors for roundabout. So we use those, and that's what we came up with, you know, basically 6.03 and then a 3.7 for the roundabout. So you tally up basically the total net present value, and that's how they measure it with the ICE form. It was pretty clear that the traffic signal is at 30, almost 37 million. Roundabout is 20.5, that's the original with the updated information that we have input in the DOT form. The traffic light is at 37.6 million, and then the roundabout, it's a 17.8 million. So with or without basically what we submitted originally and incorporating, we incorporate DOT comments, the result doesn't change. And it just shows that at the end, based on the ICE 2, the preferred intersection control strategy is the roundabout. So that kind of summarized really what the ICE 2 form is, what we submitted, and also based on addressing all of DOT comments. And the only thing is just that little box at the end there, we just need to put down, you know, what prefer intersection control strategy would we like to have as part of the recent model of the ICE 2 form. So that kind of summarized the ICE 2 process and, you know, resubmitting the information that we have.
So questions, please?
So thank you for the education in traffic engineering. I'm a lot more knowledgeable than several months ago now, so I appreciate that. The one question that I guess I still don't understand is whether you moved the roundabout. It sounds like you did move it. They were suggesting, Mass DOT was suggesting that you move it to avoid the taking at 67 West. Were you able to move it towards the center of town?
Yes, we did, we did. So Frank, if you want to share the concept B2, which is updating. So this is, this is the concept, so to get you orient, basically, if you're looking at the screen at the corner where it has a lot of blue, so that's the corner where the pet hospital is located. And then, you know, the 67 West Street, it's just across the street. So what we have done is, we took the corner, 67 West Street, you know, which is northeast corner, we shifted down basically towards the school, you know. And that's, that's the result of, again, you know, this is 10% design. So this is the concept that addressed to try to minimize the impact at 67 West.
I think that's a great result, so. Yeah. It seems pretty clear to me, given the cost, I mean, the traffic signal has a a present, net present value that's twice the roundabout. The roundabout is safer, the roundabout over time is cheaper. The maintenance costs of the roundabout are less going forward for the town. So for me, the choice is clear that we should be telling Mass DOT that we want to do the roundabout. And the only question for me is how we get the money? And do we still have that issue of, if we do the traffic signal, we lose the federal earmark money?
I think right now, you know, what we're trying to do is, whether it's a signal or the roundabout, we want to march forward as fast as we could.
Okay.
So the money, the $1.3 million, which is, we have confirmation from DOT that the project would have to be ready to be advertised by September 30th of 2026. But the money doesn't have to be spent until 2030, I think.
2030?
Yeah.
So we're not, we're not at risk of losing the federal earmark, then it sounds like, and.
Well, if we don't, if we keep delaying, we don't move forward.
Yeah.
Then we will.
Say it again?
Yeah. We need to have it advertised and committed, so we have to go through the whole design process by the 2026 date. So we do need to move it forward.
September 2026.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a lot that needs to happen between then and now.
Right.
Now and then, sorry.
Do we have enough time to do that, Ken?
Well, I, I'm not going to.
Promise?
Promise.
Okay.
So, so I, you know, I think all I can say is that, you know, we want to, we want to march forward and get ICE 2 out of the way, so we could do the 25% design. Because the next big milestone, once the ICE 2 is approved, the next big milestone is the 25% design sub motto. And that's, if it's anything else, there are so many steps. There's the 25% sub motto, there's the 75%, and then there's the 100% design. So from a DOT process, the most critical is the 25% design, because that's where you're going to have, the design is firm up, and we're ready to present it to the public. And that's where you have the big public presentation and, from DOT standpoint.
So I'll just tell you what my thinking is, which is that the capital cost is the cost that the town's going to incur. The net present value cost is different. That's really not the town's cost. That's, I mean, that's, there's a lot of traffic delay and personal injury happening that's entering into that cost. But given the, it looks like a million 300,000 difference in the capital costs, the safety improvements of the roundabout, in my mind, make it worth spending that extra million three for the town. And I think that, I understood it before, that we, we might not keep the federal earmark if we, if we went with the signals. So I think that the cost comes out sort of similar, in my mind. And then the societal value, which is the net present value cost, seems to be, you know, it's half as expensive to do the roundabout because of the delays and injuries from the traffic signals. So it's, it's very clear to me, both on a societal basis and, and I guess a town basis, that I think we should do the roundabout. So that's where I am. Thank you for all your help with figuring this out and making me a, a junior traffic engineer. I'm gonna buy a shingle now and hang it outside and get in trouble.
All right, Gus?
Ready? I got nine questions, more than Pete. But, but I'll start with where Pete was at on the, on the capital cost of the town. We've had discussions about this in the past where I took the cost of this off, off my list of things to worry about. Because what I understood was that DPW or DOT, if they approve the project, will find ways to basically find the incremental cost of this so that there would not be an added cost to the town of choosing the roundabout over the signalized intersection.
That, that is correct.
Okay, so, so that's, so to Pete's point here, we're not, we aren't expecting to spend one point three million dollars extra. The cost to the town of going either way is neutral to the town. It's not to, neutral to the state, but it's neutral to the town. So that's not a concern of mine at all, unless you tell me it should be.
No, no, I think, I think it was very clear that, you know, we happen to have an earmark of one point seven million dollar. And then the earmark is basically has a deadline. And with the roundabout, you know, it's, it's going to exceed that one point three. And DOT, you know, will, part of, because it's a tip process, you know, they will find the additional money to pay for the, you know, the difference. So we don't know how they're gonna do it, but our experience is that, you know, if the project is, say, four million dollar, we have one point three. So the two point seven, that's a small amount of money that they have to look for versus because there's so many projects out there, that's ten million dollar, fifteen million dollar. And those are harder to find.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, that one doesn't bother me at all for that reason. Mo, I had a question for you with the roundabout. Are there any issues from an operational standpoint for DPW? At one point in time, I think we heard some informal feedback that a straight intersection is easier to deal with than a roundabout. And I think probably has much to do with snowfalling operations as anything else. But with this design, is there anything that we're signing up for on the DPW operations side that's of concern to you?
I don't think so. I think the only, the only thing is looking at having the turbo roundabout instead of the single lane assists in us with our tractor trailer, especially with coming out of the transfer station to go around. So I think, I don't see any major issues, any major stumbling blocks.
Okay, that's two good answers, only seven more to go. Let's see, number three, does the right of, does the right of way estimate here include property taking and the utility easement? So that, that thing that's called right of way, that's just the permanent right of way, I think?
That's just the permanent right of way, so.
Okay, and the permanent right of way includes any public takings?
That, that, that's the property taking.
Okay.
Like, for example, if you look at the, the map there, the plan there, see the blue?
The blue is what we're taking.
That's, that's the permanent easement taking.
Okay.
And then the green is the utility easement taking.
Okay.
And then the yellow is the temporary easement taking for construction.
Okay, do we wind up having to pay for a temporary easement as well as permanent? Have an estimate of what that, that easement or that taking cost is likely to be?
That varies with communities. I think the appraiser that you're gonna hire will determine that, that value.
So first off, on this, I, I like the shift because what was more concerned with the northwest corner than, or on this map, but the upper left than what we have, the biggest blue here, just in terms of the impact on a property owner.
Yeah.
I'll throw, one, one thought I have out there is where I originally said, well, we should have a meeting where all four property owners have a chance to see what it is we're thinking about doing and react. I'm saying I would like to see two of them show up because they have the most at stake and the other two could.
They were all invited to this meeting this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I.
Show by show hands, anybody here representing any of the property?
I think there's some online, but they were all invited to attend.
So if they've been invited, I'd like to hear from if they, hoping if they were invited and they didn't come, they came back and said, no, we're not, we don't have a problem with this. Because I bet you they haven't seen this particular diagram to know where the impacts are. What I'm getting at is that I'd kind of like to know what the reaction is.
Right.
Part of that is because I don't know, I, I would actually like to try to avoid having the value of this property automatically be driven by the appraiser. If we're taking those corners and we're improving that intersection, I'd, I'd at least like to hear if the property owners would say, actually, we kind of like what you're doing with the traffic flow in our property and, you know, okay, we'll talk about what the town should pay us for it. But it would be a little different, I think, the cost if we had done it the original one, that cut off that parking lot. I would expect that'd be a lot more expensive for us to get taking, to pay for a taking than if we're doing something that's ultimately probably improving the property on two lots that have a lot of space. So I, this is not maybe do you so much, but with us, it's like, I'd kind of like, if, if we're doing the owners a favor or if we're doing, I know they're losing land and so we probably would have to pay for it. But I'm, I'm making the case, can we have a conversation about whether they really are expected to be paid prime price for land that we're probably approving their overall situation with this?
I think legal standard is the change in value of the property. And my guess is that there's minimal change in value of the property.
There's, there's nothing stopping a voluntary outreach and if people wanted, for whatever reason, just go with it. Franklin had a major downtown traffic reconstruction project during my tenure to return it to a two-way traffic around. And there were all kinds of takings and the TA went out and met one-on-one with every single property owner. And I don't know that we paid anything, any of these ones.
I, I would hope we could get a resolution that heads in that direction at least, if, if we, if we can. And, you know, bottom line for me is that I prefer to have a conversation with private owners that are going to be affected by the decisions they make in town. Now, if we can't get anywhere with them, some decisions we're just gonna have to make. But all things being equal, I'd rather have a friendly conversation and get to a good, good resolution than to just kind of jam it down people's throats who might not have been as opposed to it till you jammed it down their throat first. So that's, that's where I'm coming from on that. If there, we can see if there's anybody online who wants to comment, maybe in fact, or we get through all three of us. So, good, thank you. And so I was asking about the cost of town. We don't exactly know, yes, we do pay attempts. And is there, Mo, another question for you? Are there any, you don't have to get up and you can just give me a no or yes, it's easy. Are there any, by going to the roundabout, by going to this, I've heard discussions about, in fact, actually even on the diagram, it talked about the issues around more complicated wastewater management. You know, but it's almost sound like maybe potentially more complicated drainage in general. We had always talked with the roundabout, the DPW would have some work to do, I think, on the, on the Goddard School corner in particular. Is there anything about what we're doing here that's raising costs on the DPW side?
I don't, it depends on the stormwater management aspect of it, once the, once the construction is done. Because we do have a drainage swale there, so we'd have to make accommodations to take care of the stormwater. But we could, you know, once the design is done, we can talk about how to, how to handle that stormwater, to have it infiltrate back into the ground and avoid some of these swales. And that's, the design there is going to approach into those areas. But I don't see, I mean, we've done a lot of different projects and I don't see anything different about this one.
Okay, so I'll put words in your mouth. I don't see anything about this particular option here that's gonna really make my life and my, my department's life miserable with an impossible technical task. It's so much harder than what it would have been.
I still hope not.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with hoping, because I'll hold, I'll hold you accountable. I'll hear that anyway. Okay, that, that took care of another one. Traffic operations and capacity on the roundabout went from, they both went down, actually, the sixteen point six to the twelve point nine, forty-six point seven to forty-three three. I was just curious, in a, without getting in depth on technical, just, I was just curious about technically, what was the recalculation that led to them going down?
Yeah, so, so if it's anything else, it, it, you know, has improved slightly. I think one of the comments that we have is what we call the peak hour factor, right? Because we all collect data, we typically, industry standard is during the peak hour, we use the four peak fifteen minutes, okay? And then there's a peak hour factor, you know, if it's one, meaning it's perfect, right? You know, it's the intersections of processing all the cars. But we have used a, a higher peak hour factors. But DOT said, oh, you should have used something lower. So when you use lower, it's making it look better, the results. So that's really one, one of the reasons.
Good. Explain that, go up here. The sa- the safety, what, that category, the safety. The only question I have on that, because that's a dollarized category. In the ICE two submission, the, one of the biggest dollar benefits that was a positive had to do with the imputed value of people's time stopped at the intersection waiting. And Pete, I think, sort of alluded to this where you have the town spending money. And that's real money that lands on the taxpayer. Well, in this case, maybe not, if it's just strictly the grant, we're okay. But the other offset of the benefit is the value to the drivers who come and use that intersection. So I was sensitive to the fact that we're kind of combining cost to the town and benefit to the general public, whether they're even in our town or not, and adding them together to get to a net benefit. This says safety, which suggests to me this, these dollars are based truly on the projected cost of accidents that occur there, not the imputed value of somebody not having to wait at a red light for an extra twenty seconds. Is that correct?
That is correct, because the, the delays that you're referring to is column three. So it says truck and auto delay.
Okay.
So that's someone, you know, the longer you wait.
Right.
You're wasting time, wasting gas and, and, and all that.
Not to feel crass, but I don't, as a worker for the town, given this is a town project, I don't really want to care. Not about that column, safety, yes, but not that column. It's like, part of me says, maybe if they had to wait longer, they'd be less inclined to use our, our roads as cut-throughs when they're commuting. But it's a different issue. Let's see, I already talked about the stormwater, talked about meetings. And the only other question I had is, in what ways that would be meaningful to us, could a ten percent design? So we're gonna, you'd like us to make a decision tonight, or at least in the foreseeable future?
To submit, to submit the ICE two, addressing their comments.
Yeah.
So one of the comments DOT is they, they want us to put down what is our preferred intersection control strategy.
Okay.
And the history of ICE has really changed, you know, this, it's been the last two years or so, this ICE forum has really been updated to, to use, I think that's the best word to describe it. And, and we've been involved at the very beginning since they updated. This is another project that we've been working with them and they have used our project. It's Route one oh seven in Salem and that has about twelve signal. And DOT said, we want to use your project as a pilot to do this new updated. So, so I think, I think because of other lesson learned experience, so the DOT in the past, I think I may have mentioned it, they're very vocal about what they like or their preferred intersection control strategy. And I think because of other communities to push back the lesson learned, Milton is a good example, now he's in court and all that. So they, they are letting, they want to hear from the community instead of just shoving it down there.
Okay, so, and I probably would have had that same attitude early on when we were being told, wow, they're probably gonna force you to do this. I dug my heels in when I, especially when I thought it was gonna be a cost impact, which now I know it's not. The, the only question I had on the ten percent to twenty-five percent design is, are there any significant ways that ten percent design could change to that? You know, it could evolve when we get to the twenty-five percent design that are potentially foreseeable that we could get bitten in some way? So in other words, if the twenty-five percent design suddenly says, oh, we thought we could, I'm making this up, but, oh, we thought we could move this turbo, you know, and, and get it away from the corner. But, you know, there's some reasons we can't do it. I think it's gonna have to be back and you already made the decision, so now you're stuck with it. Is, I would, is this a, is it reasonable for us to assume that if we make a recommendation or we, we choose a preferred option here, we should not expect some sort of a radical change in how that option is characterized as it, as it evolves from a ten percent design to a twenty-five percent design that basically would say, oh, it completely changed everything? Yeah, I, I, I know you can't guarantee that, but what I'm assuming is a twenty-five percent design is usually a more detailed design, probably has more release, reliable cost estimates. You know, if there's any on-the-ground incremental issues that came up that, you know, from owners or from practical things, oh, we thought we could do it this way and no, we can't, that those things are all in bounds for me. It's just, I wouldn't want to make a decision on a ten percent design and then suddenly find out the twenty-five percent design has completely changed it to where the basis of making the decision at the ten percent point would be overturned. Do I need to worry about that?
That's, that's a very challenging question. I think the best way to answer it is, once you pick a design, and in this case, it's based on the ICE two process that DOT had laid out and which encompass a lot of the variables, including right of ways being discussed. So I think, I think that design really moves forward. And so, once you move forward, so you, you, you are committing time and money, you know, designers and all that. And that's why DOT, you know, even though twenty-five percent is critical, that's why they require this big public hearing. Because the big public hearing is where, if there's going to be a majority of the audience that's against the project, DOT is going to stop, they're not gonna move forward, they're gonna rethink what's going on. And so if that happens, then, you know, the town has invested a lot of time and money to get to the twenty-five percent design. So, so, so that's, I think that's the best I could.
That's a helpful answer, because if something suddenly came up where, you know, it was twenty-five million dollars for the public takings, well, that would change the temper of this whole thing, but it probably wouldn't survive a public hearing anyway. So that, that answers my question. So for slightly different reasons than Pete, I favor the roundabout. I came into this where I was concerned about added cost to the town for the roundabout over the, because I, I actually think the signalized intersection is a good, is a good design. They're having those clear turn lanes and with dedicated arrows, I think would solve the problem. I understand how a roundabout, you know, presumably make it harder for people to get in front. But anyway, the cost issue went away. The public taking issue, I believe with this, I, I wasn't expecting it was gonna disappear. But I think we've dealt with, the part of the public taking I was worried about was the parking lot because I was thinking it would be reasonable for the owners of the other corners with as much land as they have to say, yeah, we can handle that. And we, and I think we could even make the argument that this is a better intersection. There's, I understand the safety advantages, so that's, that's true. But I hope people fired up in one of our last extended discussions on this. We're not gonna put roundabouts at every lighted intersection in town because it's not practical to do that. But safety is important. And then the thing, to be honest with you, the thing that changed my mind for sure was a conversation I had with you a couple of months back where I asked you about the traffic flow.
Right.
And you said, I think people will prefer to be able to go around, through a roundabout at this intersection. So people, when we, when we finish the, the state hospital development. So people, when we when we finish the the state hospital development, we have three hundred thirty-four additional housing units up there, and people are deciding whether they want to go into town by going down Hospital Road to Harding Street and going that way.
Yeah.
Or whether they want to go out onto North Meadows Road, like the original traffic projections for, it wasn't for the state hospital, I think it was for Chaplain Landing.
Yeah.
It was fifty percent were supposed to go to Hospital Road and fifty percent go to Harding. I don't think that's what the real practice, you know, what our experience has been. But if we make it easier and more attractive for people to go down North Meadows Road to get it downtown, I'm really happy about that. So although that's not part of some of the discussion we've had, that point that you made to me is actually what caused me to flip, with before I had all the details, that's what flipped me over the, because it's gonna make a big difference. And that was the discussions we had about the other three intersections. That's all part of a of an integrated whole. That's where I'm at.
All right, that was good. All right, so kind of running on your idea, when we talk about surprises. First of all, I do appreciate what you've laid out here. I think what really came out of this more than anything was, you referenced it with, you know, things being jammed down people's throats. We had a chance to ask questions, right? Instead of when we first started this discussion, it was, there's no option, you have to do what DOT says, and we're like, wait, it's our town. So now, we've taken the time, we didn't check the fatal flaw box when we could have. We're like, nope, let's push this through, let's get all the data points. The safety is certainly, we've heard that all around, right? So that's, we're not gonna take safety lightly. And then delays, and then we just did come up at our last select board meeting with, now that we know we're gonna create some delays at Harding, Harding and Hospital, right? That's just a given, if you're gonna do three stop signs there. And you're going to create the roundabout there at North and Harding. We're gonna start rerouting how people go. And if this is going to, in theory, not create a backup, then I like how this is going. I do, I I have a question in terms of how this may feed into, and only because I was leaving the transfer station last week, I hit the light, I hit this light, and then I continued on, and I could see how the center of town was starting to get backed up later in the afternoon. As, now that we know it's gonna be more or less constant during peak traffic times, people are just gonna be able to continue down twenty-seven. Is there a concern that we're now gonna create an artificial backup, because now it's not regulated light to light, light to light? It's you can just keep going down twenty-seven. And right now, I know in front of like Mother Anna's and CVS in that area at night, that gets almost all the way to the first set of lights. I just wanna hope that if we go this route, we're not creating even worse design, because there's really no artificial buffer anymore. It's, you can, if if most of the traffic's going down twenty-seven, you're gonna go. And, you know, it's funny, when I was sick in roundabouts, I chuckled, because I've had to go down to Cape a lot of the last two weeks, and, you know, you get to the Bourne Rotary, and like, that's the last place you want to be in the middle of summer on a Saturday morning, right? Because you have all this traffic, and people, I think half of this, people don't aren't familiar with roundabouts from other, from Connecticut and New Jersey and wherever, and we're so used to it. In a small town with slower speeds and, God willing, you know, a fraction of the traffic, like, I I'm sensing we should have a good flow. I just want to make sure that it doesn't then impact as we roll closer to town.
Yeah, I think, I think the roundabout, like I had said, indicated to Gus when he had asked, you know, how it's gonna operate, roundabout basically, you know, it provide, whether you, if you're coming, you're driving on twenty-seven, or you are on the side street, everyone has to slow down. And the roundabout is designed for a speed that's less than twenty miles per hour. You know, if you're driving faster than twenty miles per hour going through it, we call it the deflection point, and that's not gonna happen, because that car is going to make some noise.
Sure.
So safety wise, I think, you know, you will you will have that, just, you know, and and I think everyone has to learn how to drive in a roundabout. I know in Massachusetts, you know, people just, you know, you know, cars in in the road where you have to right of way, you have to yield, everyone comes in. So because of the yielding and, you know, the gap, I I really, you know, I I don't think it's a continuous flow, like you had indicated, that potentially it could impact the intersection that's down, you know, downstream. And if if that happens, then, you know, I think there's potential room to adjust the traffic light, you know, if that happens, but I I would like to think it's not going to be a significant impact.
I would agree with that, except I found out we can't adjust our own traffic lights. We, because 109, part of the reason why everyone takes these backroads.
Yeah.
Is because the last study done on 109 was done in, I think, nineteen ninety-eight, and safe to say Medfield changed a little bit since then. And it would cost somewhere around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do a new study, but we just can't change it. Like, trust me, that, if we could change the traffic at South and 109 and North at 109, that would be heavenly, but we just can't with the flip of the switch. But, you know, we'll have time, you know, if we go this route, which I think we're sensing, I mean, I I appreciate this feedback. I'm hoping, I mean, I, if I was to go towards the lights, I'd say there's very limited surprise, right? Because you you know what you're going to have. But I'm worth, I'm worth taking the gamble of saying, you guys have shifted. My biggest thing when we had this meeting three months ago, four months ago, is, I don't think it, I don't think there's any reason to take land from anybody if there's another option. But now what we're doing is we're taking what I'll call dead corners that not gonna which not impact anybody's business. So hopefully it doesn't cost that much. I can't imagine it being drastic. So if we're doing the right thing, and the argument can be, it's time and it's safety, those are two good things. So to Gus's point, Pete's point, if we're making it so that the the businesses and the residents that live in that area, in theory, have a quicker in and out, and not not saying speed wise, but just getting in and out from their roads, and in theory, having a a safer intersection to go through, then that's a win-win.
So I think that the moving the the roundabout down towards the downtown actually improves the safety of it, because it puts that little turn in at the at the end, which is like what they did at the roundabout that I happen to like, which is over by Babson College on Route one thirty-five in Wellesley at the bottom of the hill, Wellesley Avenue goes over the hills. And and when Wellesley redid that, what they did was they made you do a little bit of a squiggle turn, and instead of having the things come in straight, you have to go a little bit to.
Yeah, that's that's how.
And your your design seems to do the same thing, and that forces you to slow down even more, so it makes it even safer.
Correct.
So again, from your experience, can, you know, I think we called this a modified peanut or something, or a kidney bean back in the day? Is, is, could that be the surprise that that potentially comes our way, that in, that twenty-five percent, they have to change it to more of a traditional, and they, we end up losing what we've tried to achieve, which is pulling away from the parking lot?
I I don't think so, because, yeah, if it's anything else, we have to go through the traditional, then, you know, I I, you know, I I, if it's anything else, I think the reason we came up with this turbo or peanut chip is because all the approach, the volumes are not, they are kind of lopsided. So we're trying to, you know, address all the volume adequately as they enter the intersection.
Is is there a traffic engineer called Rizzo?
They, yes, long time ago.
Okay, so years ago, Rizzo did a traffic study for the state hospital site, and they actually said that eighty percent of the traffic from the Medfield State Hospital Development, it might have been the one that the state was gonna do, was gonna go down to twenty-seven instead of down Hospital Road to downtown. And and I just thought that that was the the worst assumption of a traffic engineer, because eighty percent of the traffic from Medfield State Hospital is not gonna go down to twenty-seven, unfortunately, unless we cut off to Hospital Road by the brook.
There's stop signs by two of them. So can we do this at this point? I would like to open this up to anyone in the audience that has any questions, and I'm gonna check and see if anybody online.
I ask my questions in advance, so I'll just kind of be out there in the room.
Okay. Anyone else?
The spreadsheet there.
Can you do me one small favor? Thank you.
One and one Stewart Street. The spreadsheet there obviously is based off of a projection, which it seems to be down at the bottom refers to an opening year of twenty thirty-one. Is that what you're anticipating, should this moves forward at a normal speed? This is six years out.
We typically, it's pretty industry standard. In the ICE forum, they make us do two scenario. One is the opening year, which is about seven years, you know, bustle miners. And the other one is called design year, which is very conservative, which is like twenty years out. So we looked at both. So we we cover, you know, in the event, if there's any surge of volume. I mean, twenty years out is it's very, very conservative. So we've done that analysis too.
I'm more interested in how quickly can this get done? And so is is twenty thirty-one an accurate timeframe? When, if if this all gets approved and moves forward, and we get through the next stages? And I get, I've worked with DOT, I get out there, you can't put timeframes on DOT things because they have no timeframes, it's on their timeframe. But I guess from a reasonable projection, if this all proceeds, and then we do a meeting with the town, town supports it, when would this open? And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but I mean, give me a range if you if you're more comfortable with that. Are we still talking like six years, or are we talking any sooner than?
I think we're talking less than, less than five years.
Thank you.
And is that safe to say regardless, whether we go with the roundabout or whether we go with the lights, it's still roughly that same window, because we're still dealing with DOT?
Yeah, it's it's the process, doesn't matter what what design option, you know, it's the process.
Okay.
And 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 they've been pretty good, you know, in terms of going back to us so far, you know, like within a month. You know, in the past, it's been more than that, so.
Okay. And I I want to squelch, and I asked that question because a comment was made to me probably like a month ago, like, if they just go with the light, they can start tomorrow. And then Christine was quick to say, like, no, that's not how it works.
I wish, that's not, nothing's starting tomorrow.
I want to understand that we're, there's, this is gonna take time regardless. And if it takes a little bit longer, but the numbers speak to themselves, what you've been able to push out, that time and safety play in to a significant factor, it's not just a couple of points off.
Yeah, I I know Christine had alluded to, you know, the the timeline, because there's a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
And the key thing is the the right of way taking, because that's on the the town, the process, you know, you know, once we, once we firm up the design, we know exactly what the takings are, and it's the process, you know, we might have to go to town meeting and and all that.
Okay.
So the timing of the town meetings, everything has to kind of align, you know, to to try to meet the deadline here.
Okay.
Sorry, stirred another question based on that response. So when, assuming this proceeds, when will the town know exactly what parameters are of the taking, the limits of work, et cetera? Is that at the twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent, you should have a very good idea as to what you do.
So at that point, the town can then proceed with the takings if?
Yes. DOT would want you to start that process.
Right.
That's sooner than better.
So. So they also have a a division of takings.
Yes.
And once you make a decision to move forward, then we're put in touch with that department, and we work closely with them to advance that process.
Right.
And from a timing perspective, now, we will hold our annual town meeting the first Monday in May, so it's somewhere in May, for second, third, fourth, one of those dates. Is it, is it wise for us to put a hold on our warrant to potentially try to do a vote that night, or is that just too short of a window?
May of this year.
Yeah, you won't, you won't know, we we don't know the amount of money, so you can't ask for an appropriation or an authorization from town meeting.
That's what twenty-five percent would get.
It'll also be a specific geographical area.
Well, it's trying to prove it even faster, but okay, can't, all right, try.
She may have to call us.
I don't know, whatever, wait. I I don't have a preference for either of the solutions. I I was just kind of curious, is, do we, do we wind up with four intersections being done over the next five years, three of them for the hospital, and one of them at West Street and and twenty-seven? And how does the traffic get anywhere if these things aren't staggered in such a way? There there's only like, what, three ways into town, and you're gonna be plugged in.
You'll be on the wall pole side, you're locked out. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But but I think if anything, Bill, logic would say, we'll be working with VHB, and and we're not going to let them put their head in the sand. That if they're gonna say, hey, the detour, we're gonna send people down West Street, well, that might not be a good idea. And hey, the detours, so I think it's just a matter of making sure that nobody moves a chess piece without knowing what's going on. And maybe that does impact the timeline a little, and and I don't know the priority of whether DOT will say, this is when we're gonna do it, and everyone dances around us, or if Trinity's a little bit further ahead of the curve, and they can start in the next two years and not.
It's something that's gotta be right up there with everything else, along with the safety factors.
Trinity did say that they wouldn't do all three of their intersections at the same time, that they would phase them.
But they're gonna start well before this.
Yeah, I'm hoping there, I'm hoping VHB is completed very shortly.
Tell me, Mike, Gus.
We don't have a Mass DOT project.
Be way ahead of us.
Yeah. They they can start construction without having to do any of this.
Plus, like the Harding Hospital intersection, that's just a realignment and some stop signs. We're not doing anything radical. Roundabout at North and Harding will be tricky, and I'm guessing the West Street intersection will be in the middle in terms of complexity because of the grade.
Yeah, I think Jeff Keteritz from VHB said at your last meeting, they anticipate to be back with you within two months with the with the final designs for approval.
Okay. We have no further questions?
No, none of the, none of the property owners.
I don't have any questions on that.
I just, I had a clarification.
Go ahead.
So this is a chip process, so in addition to the development design process that you're going to watch, you're also waiting for other projects that are ahead of you in, that they're working on actively, that impacts on the timing as well.
Yeah, so so you're referring to the state, right? The MBO process.
Yeah, tip.
Like, like I said, they have a list of projects, you know, priority projects, and, you know, that's beyond anyone's control. And and and, you know, if if the town, you know, move, march forward with the project, and if the design is ready, you know, shovel ready is a lot easier for DOT, because there could be another project that couldn't meet the fiscal year, guess who's gonna get the money? It's gonna be the project that's sitting there shovel ready.
There is some competition among projects.
Yes, of course, yes.
But we have strong federal delegation support on this, and they have been working with their legislative liaison at Mass DOT to move this forward.
Yeah, that that helps.
And this isn't just any random intersection, this is an intersection that has a red flag on it already.
Yeah.
Okay. Are you guys good voting tonight to move this forward?
Oh, yes.
I move that we vote to select the roundabout option, option B, as the preferred solution for redesigning.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Right, thank you very much, that was super informative.
So we will complete that last box based on tonight's decision, and then we will resubmit ICE two.
Okay, yeah, and I think if we, when we present this to the town, I think the data points that were presented here. Should make the discussion an easy discussion in the sense of, we've all seen the lights back up, right? So if this is trying to keep things flowing, so good. Good, right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very helpful, thanks, Ken.
All right, next. All right, next up, Medfield Energy Committee to request a select board to approve the application technical assistance grant for a decarbonization roadmap.
Hello.
There we go. Hi.
My name's Emily Lammy, I'm a member of the Medfield Energy Committee. Penny, our chair, was not able to speak tonight, so I've been sent here to speak to you. The topic we wanted to discuss is an opportunity to apply for decarbonization planning assistance from the Department of Energy Resources. You might remember that Penny was here last summer. She introduced you to the Climate Leaders Program through D O E R, which is the next generation of the Green Communities Program that Medfield is already a part of. We've received hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding from Green Communities, so it's a great program for the town. The projects that have been funded have allowed the town to install more energy efficient equipment, which also saves significant money for the town going forward. For example, at Lake Middle School, the boiler was recently replaced with a more efficient version, that's estimated to be saving thirty-five thousand dollars per year for the town, so really great savings. Also, when Penny was here last summer, the board approved the zero emissions first vehicle policy. And the next step for qualifying for the Climate Leaders Program would be that the town needs to create this municipal decarbonization. And the next step for qualifying for the Climate Leaders Program would be that the town needs to create this municipal decarbonization roadmap. Now, what is a municipal decarbonization roadmap? Basically, it's a plan that specifically would spell out what the town will do. To transition all of the town buildings and vehicles onto fossil fuel free equipment in the future. Because we don't want to do this all at once and just replace all of our equipment. It makes more sense to wait till the end of its life, or we're replacing a roof, or there's like another planned renovation. So D O E R is offering this grant that will provide technical assistance to come up with this plan. And the next deadline is March twenty eighth to apply for this. So that's why the Energy Committee is recommending to submit an application as soon as possible. You may have also heard recently Medfield was recognized for achieving a twenty percent reduction in energy use over the past few years. So really impressive, we're doing really great, and the next step is just to work on this decarbonization roadmap. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Great.
Pete? No questions. Great supporter of the idea.
I have a couple. Uh, first question is, how does this plan have anything to do with the Arrow Street decarbonization?
So this is a, this is separate. So the Arrow Street project is, we're nearing completion on that. That's the twenty year capital plan. Uh, we're nearing completion on this. This is separate from that. I think that, um. I think the roadmap would probably make recommendations that would speed up what the Arrow Street recommendations have been, but I'm not, I'd have to rely on Hilli or Penny for that.
Maybe the, one could feed information to the other. Like, because one of the steps of this roadmap is there needs to be like an inventory, and they really did a great job starting that.
Right, and we can probably use a lot of that. We can't be recognizing, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I I knew Hilli has explained this to me, but we can't be recognized as a climate leader. Unless you complete this decarbonization plan through this process.
Sorry, I haven't finished going through the decarbonization plan to get the full feedback that you've asked for, Christine. But the thing I did know is that it was up, that this plan came up with a total cost over the next. Ten to twelve or fifteen years of a hundred twenty five million dollars. And the priority one items, which were the first one, years one and two, was fifty four million dollars. Now, I'm gonna point on that when we're looking at a school project that will probably be somewhere between eighty and, you know, a hundred million dollars is. This is not a plan because it didn't take into account any fiscal reality. It's it's worse than a plan. It's that, some people that don't pay attention might think we're actually gonna be able to do something there's no way we can do. So that leads to my second question was, will this decarbonization plan take a look at the economic? There, there's a technical issue about what does it, when does it make sense to change things? Will this also take a look at the economics around feasibility as part of the plan?
Well, one factor is that I believe the the roadmap takes town input. So that's something that, that's the goal, is to have a plan that we actually want to do. You know, like, what can we do? It gets pretty complicated with all the finances.
So what could, so I'm not really intending to give you a hard time because you're here for Penny anyway. But. If I look at Tom Cap, that had town input too. Except it doesn't have any numbers, it doesn't have any practical application of what we, that isn't a plan. It's a philosophical document more than anything. Nothing wrong with it. Except that it doesn't include carbon sequestration, but Hilli already heard from that, from me on that. And and what I'm getting at is, if we develop plans. That go from now, you know, presumably would be, we'd want to have things completed, I guess, by twenty fifty, given our stated intentions to try to support the state's goal. Without the hard discussions of what we can afford and how it's gonna be phased in. It's not really a plan. It's sort of a wish. And so what I'm, you see what I'm getting at is, I would love to see a plan where we really have the heart knows economics to go along with. The the logical, technical around the sequence. Recognizing that probably won't happen as fast as some people would like to see it happen, but it's, as a financial reality, it's not feasible to do that. Especially when we have this school project looming. So where I'm coming from is when we, and I know it's grant money, so it's easy for us to say yes. But when we have the grant money, we spend the grant money and we get a plan, and this, I'm partly not going after this one, I'm partly going after the Arrow Street plan. It's like, I don't know how much we spent, we maybe didn't pay them anything, maybe that came in through a grant, but I don't know how much they got paid. To give us a plan that I looked at and said, this is, this isn't a plan. This is like somebody developing a, a house design for a mansion and saying, gee, everything you told me you wanted, this is the mansion. And it's like, you can't afford to even buy the land for that mansion. So that's, that's the thing I'm being sensitive.
It might still be a step, though, is to, first you look at the dream house. And then you gotta like, be like, well, how does that match with what we can afford? I would hope that that's what this would be, would be to do, to try to do, do it more, do better. And as we go forward, we gotta keep moving forward. And the other thing is too, that if money is a big concern, this is all, only what this is about is money. Because the Climate Leaders Program is offering sixty million dollars to to towns that apply for this. And if you don't apply, you can't get any of that money, so it's a lot of money that could be gotten too.
But I don't want to be Pavlov's dog here, because oh, the federal government's got money, so we'll just jump as high as we need to if we're, if we're. I'm more concerned about how the town spends this money, in fairness. I already just went on record that, hey, if the state's paying the difference between roundabout and an intersection, no skin, it is sort of skin up. My back, but only indirectly through the state taxes. I feel the same way to a lesser, with a lesser degree of intensity at the federal level. So the fact that a grant is there, that's great. That makes me feel really good about it. I'm happy to approve this. So I'm having a conversation about what our expectations of this thing are. I'm not gonna argue against the grant. But I do get worried when, because somebody gave us the money to do something, we did it. And then we have something that we say is a plan that's not a plan because it's not practical.
Yeah, if we don't end up using it.
Yeah, because then all you do is you create impressions in the minds of people who don't pay a lot of attention. Oh, this is what we're doing. And then that can, that morphs into, well, that's what we said we were doing, so I guess this is what we have to pay for it. And it's like, this is just, in in this other plan, I I just see that as a major disconnect. It doesn't really help us decide what to do because it's so far out there. That's something I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the grant.
Thank you.
But I, but I, I want, you know, you could, I want somebody to, to bring that back into the Energy Committee. That this has, if we're gonna spend this money that somebody's gonna give us, let's spend it for a real plan that we can say, this is what we want to do. And in order to do that, there's a financial side of this that has to be considered. Next question, does this have anything to do with whatever the next increment? We, we, we passed the Stretch Energy Code to become a green community is one of the things. Does this have anything to do with the next increment of the super stretch or whatever, whatever that next thing is? Does this have anything to do with that?
Well, that's a, a separate requirement to apply to be a climate leader. Is that you have to pass what's called the Specialized Code.
Right.
Um, which is similar to the Stretch Code, but more efficiency. So that's something that is for the future, you know, we, we, the Energy Committee is probably gonna recommend for two thousand twenty six to try to bring that to town meeting.
So again, just to, just to give you the heads up, right now, without knowing what that code is. I am not supportive of that, but I don't know what it is. I will make the observation that we went to the Stretch Energy Code. It was all, well, it's only the towns and we get grants and all that, and we, I was on the warrant committee when that first came up, we shot it down. And then I think I was still on the warrant committee when it came back the second time, and we, we agreed to it. The concern I had at the time was if all towns in the state adopt the Stretch Energy Code. And if that adoption involved an automatic acceptance of whatever future changes to that Stretch Energy Code were made. Basically, the, the town's local government was completely giving away control over where that Stretch Energy Code could go. Because everybody under the provisions of adopting it was something I really don't understand. We were pre-binding future select wards to have to adopt something. Makes no sense to me at all. I I wouldn't have thought it would have been legal. I think at one point it wasn't, and then I heard subsequently, well, yes, it is. And so what I'm getting at is that, that process, which sounds so, you know, innocuous to some. Is actually a very dangerous process when suddenly what's happened is all controls on the direction are, are, are lost. I've talked to people in the last couple of years about the Stretch Energy Code, which was not supposed to be a big deal. And I've talked to people that said, gosh, in fact, I just talked to somebody at the Mass Municipal Association about. With, in order for us to comply with what the Stretch Energy Code is requiring, we can't technically do it. And when they were doing a renovation, they would have had to do some outside walls, but then on top of that, if you have to do an outside wall for part of a house. And you say, well, you don't have to do it for the rest. You can just have a stupid looking house because all of a sudden this outside wall here looks big, and then the rest of it looks like it always did. I'm more sensitive to the negative impacts that something that's seemingly harmless can have, if it's not carefully thought through. I'm, I'm in favor of energy efficiency for environmental reasons more so than carbon activist reasons. I'm an environmentalist. Uh, and so the things that we can, and I adopt the Boy Scouts principle of leave no trace. We should have a society that takes on what Boy Scouts are taught when they're out hiking. To come and go and don't leave an impact. We should be adopting that as a society. So the idea of using less energy, being more efficient, being smarter about stuff, I'm on board with. Some of the, like, some of the advocacy concerned about the direction of, so.
Well, that's short.
The Energy Committee did say that, that Penny or anyone would be happy to come back and give a presentation specifically about all the climate leaders criteria in the future.
That's probably.
Just today, we just wanted to look at this grant because of the deadline.
Yeah, that's fine. And I, and why I went such a long-winded diatribe is, I'm hoping that you'll carry that back to the Energy Committee and says, you know, there's at least one guy at the select ward. Who really wants to make sure when you come in, you've got the cost benefit analysis, the financial analysis to go along with anything you're recommending.
And just really quick, the Stretch Energy Code, we've been working with the Building Department this year to get training. Because it has had changes, it's had, just like you were suggesting, people are having difficulty, there's changes, they're trying to learn. So that's what we want to do is just make sure that we're learning the new changes. And with the Specialized Code, the next code that we could adopt, that only affects new construction, so it's much simpler.
That just means the people that are voting on it aren't the ones that would have to pay for it. That, that doesn't automatically sell for me, but.
But it's just much simpler.
In fairness, just so you know, when I was getting my master's degree, the very first project that I worked on and that I had worked on over the summer was a review of Massachusetts Energy Code to see if it should be tightened. So that's going back a ways when there was a building code commission in Massachusetts.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so, well, and I don't have, I, I don't have a problem only because I know what you guys are trying to do in terms of. Moving forward to be able to access some of the dollars. Where I, I don't have as much of an issue, correct me if my next statement is not correct. But we changed some of the wording when we brought forward, when Penny brought forward the plan, however many months ago. It was, we may, we may, we may, instead of you should, you should, or you must, you must, right? So as long as we continue to leave that, we can let our common sense step in. Because I'll tell you something with, with electric cars and all this that have kind of freaked me out. The California fires, I'm not getting an electric car for very long. People couldn't get out of their own driveway because they didn't have, they had cars they could not recharge, cars that like. I mean, there was a lot of things that make people take a step back and go, okay, wait a minute, like fossil fuel, I can get in my car and go. Like, so that's why, as we move forward and we look at things, maybe our fire department, police department can't jump on as quick. We need them to be able to go if there's a disaster, if there's a significant blizzard that people don't have access to recharge. I mean, the common sense things that we have to look at. So I have no problem approving this because I, I, I think that we're doing it with the best of intentions. Your, your group is obviously chasing all the, the dollars, and you're gonna continue to push us, that's fine, right? I mean, we've got, we've got to see what's going on and, and learn along the way and realize when do we have to step in and maybe put the brakes on a little? And when we can embrace it and say, let's see what we can get from the sixty million.
The Energy Committee has saved the town so much money. It's just phenomenal, the amount of money that the Energy Committee has saved us.
Every one of those was a logical discipline.
You don't, you don't want to say that we have forced people, you have to do the following. I mean, I told people, like, with my air conditioning, I, I chose to go the right way back in twenty twenty, twenty, what am I saying, two thousand and three? Puron wasn't even what everyone was talking about, but it just saved me significant money two summers ago. But nobody in town told me I had to. I used common sense. And that's all I'm ever gonna ask is that we educate and let people choose, but not force someone to do something in construction that, you know, might not work for them right there. So I won't go into the weeds here any further. I think we, we, you came and did a great job educating us. We can put the vote in and.
So I would just add a comment, which was that, is that there was a time before which there was a state building code. And every municipality had its own building code. And the society decided that that was a very bad system. It made it very difficult for builders, I'm sure, to build, because every time you went to, you had to learn a whole new system. Um, and so I think that it makes absolute sense to have a state building code, and when the state decides to change it, I think that makes sense. So I'm in a slightly different position than my colleagues on this, I guess.
You want to bring back the building code commission? Can tell you what happened when it went away. I was there.
All right, let's make the vote.
I move that we approve the application for a technical assistance grant for a decarbonization roadmap.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I just want to thank Emily. We've probably exchanged more than a thousand emails trying to set up, not, not just this meeting, but all of our meetings for training. Working on the Stretch Energy Code, and Emily has been so conscientious of how to make that proceed the best way with education, and I just appreciate all the emails. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would add to that because I, I see Emily at the, at the Energy Committee, and she is just doing tremendous amounts of work for the Energy Committee on all sorts of facets, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're, you're making our town much better for all of us, so we appreciate it.
All right.
Oh, Hilli's gonna be so mad you got her standing.
All right, now let's go to Detective Adams' fire chief selection process.
Yes, in front of you, you should have, I've laid out a proposal for the selection process. You should have a copy of that in front of you. I will get you a copy shortly. And actually, can you bring it on the, do you have it? Could you bring it on the screen?
Yeah, it was, it was underneath this. Do you have this? Yeah, there you go. Keep going, keep going. There's a stack there. Keep going underneath that.
That one didn't split. There it is, yep.
Yeah. And Frank's gonna bring it on, try and bring it on the screen as well. I love when I surprise him with things I would like to put on the screen. So I think this is a really good example of something we have been working on since two thousand nineteen. One of the things I promised you when I interviewed for this position as town administrator is that I would work on succession planning. And that I would work to train our internal people to be able to take over for our department head positions. This is definitely one of the first and one of our most high profile positions. But I believe that we can and have fostered internal candidates for this position. So I would like to post internally only. I'm proposing to post that on February fifth, tomorrow, if you approve. I, and you'll see that I'm going to fast track this because I think it's important that we, recognizing that Chief Carrick goes retiring on May second. Recognizing that, I think it's important for you to interview candidates. And have them immediately shift to be a day captain to work with the chief on a daily basis. Because while we've been providing training and we've been, you know, allowing people who are interested in different things to participate. It's also another thing to sit next to the chief and see what he does twenty four seven. So that is the, why the timeline seems to be a little faster than we would normally if we were going outside the department. I would like to have a discussion, I mean, an interview on, your meeting on March fourth.
Okay.
And I've also included a copy of the job advertisement for your review as well. There may be some minor wordsmithing that we do before we release this, but we're, we're hoping to have this posted tomorrow.
Do you have any questions, comment?
I think this is an excellent idea. I think that this is the way that we should be moving forward. Let's look at our candidates that we have in the department first.
Gus?
I, I do have a question.
Sure.
And it's maybe to you, Mark. The, are we required to post even internally if we think we know who we want to go with?
Um, no.
And let me, let me clarify that. Well, I'll, I'll point out the way that we chose you to replace Mike was not through any posting at all.
Correct.
But a logical progression. And on the other hand, when we replaced the police chief, we had a recommendation from the outgoing police chief that we elected not to take, and we did a full blown search. So part of my, where I'm headed with this is if the fire chief has a recommendation, I'd like to hear it. And that, if, if legally, we then can decide whether we want to choose that recommendation or not. Or whether we want to potentially choose it, but not preclude anybody else, I'm, I'm happy to do it. happy to do it in whatever process makes sense.
I don't doubt that the chief has a recommendation for you. He did approve this selection process and I've been working with him on that. I think there was, it was brought to my attention over the last two weeks that there may be two candidates that are interested. I know there was definitely one internal candidate, and there was brought to my attention there might be two. So in talking to the chief, we thought the most appropriate thing would be to advertise. But you're under no obligation to, you can follow the same process that you did in my search.
You just answered my question, if that's what the chief said we should do, that's all I need to know. And the reason I'm even raising it is because I think one of the things we, I think you've been trying to do, I certainly have hoped to, have been encouraging it, is we need to have a system here in town where people, I think we're better off with a system here in town where people who come to work here don't simply come here to take a job with the town, and then if they find another job somewhere else, they go to it. But they recognize that if they come to this town, they have a realist, if they want, put the effort into it.
Yep.
And if they have the talent, we're willing to give people a progression, to make progress over the course of whatever portion of their career they'd like to have here. So for that reason, I'm asking the question to make sure we've got.
Absolutely.
Clarity around, about expectations around what we can do, what we may do, and in this case, you just answered my question about, yeah, this sounds like what we should do, so.
Yep, yep. If the chief supports it, that's, makes all the sense.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The sooner the better?
Yes, we will, we will post it tomorrow and move the process forward along this timeline.
Vote on anything or?
I think to vote that you support the Fire Chief selection process, it is your appointment, so I think it's important that you, you've agreed to that.
Right. I move that we support the proposed Fire Chief selection process, as laid out in the memo that Christine's provided.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, move on to 2025 Annual Town Meeting, let's call 2026 Operating Budget, Town Budgets, Capital Stabilization Projects, and Municipal Building Stabilization Project.
Excuse me, I'm actually, yep, you should have your hand out. So two weeks ago, when I was before you, I made a presentation to you that kind of gave you the 40,000-foot view of our budget, where we were, what we thought we could fund, what we couldn't fund. Tonight, you're receiving our actual budget worksheet. You will notice the items in yellow have not been filled in, those are the items we're still working with the Warrant Committee on. And I am pleased to tell you that we have been able to meet the guidance of the Warrant Committee, and that was the 3.7% that they indicated back in the fall. Now, I will tell you that those assumptions and that guidance was based on various fixed costs, and I know we touched upon this briefly last week, that we have had an indication from Maya, who is our health insurance, that we may have an increase in what we anticipated for our health insurance increase. We don't have that final number yet, but for anybody who was at the MMA Conference or Maya heard that those costs of health insurance are going up. And that is not just our plan, there are some smaller towns that are in smaller groups that have had better experience than us, but for most part, we're seeing anybody in the GIC or Maya having increases anywhere from 10 to 19%. It's also pushing some of these smaller insurance pools out of business. The Minuteman Ashoba Regional Joint Purchasing Group just went out of business after 34 years, they could no longer support the health increases that they were incurring. Berkshire Health just voted last week for a 16% increase for their members, and we anticipate the GIC will be announced in March. As you know, last year, we formally organized a PEC, we did a formal negotiating with them, and we were able to save the town and the employees over $700,000 in our health insurance. And that directly resulted in a $400,000 reduction in the health insurance budget for fiscal year 2025. I don't anticipate we're going to have that luck for this year. I am working very hard with them to not only recognize the national trends of usage, but to talk to us locally about what we've done, not only the plan design changes that we've put in place, all of the programs that the town has been doing to address any sort of health insurance increases within our risk pool in Medfield. So I'm hoping to have an answer on that shortly. However, the decision, once we find, once we get our final number for the health insurance increase, that may change the Warrant Committee's guidance to both the town and the schools, and that may result us both going back to the drawing board. So I just want to give everybody, as you're reviewing these, these numbers will change. So now that I'm done with talking about the guidance, I'd like to talk about the individual departments. There will be some change on these. Right now, we are still working on collective bargaining for the police department, and we are still trying to refine some of our department budgets. Obviously, with the change in the fire department budget, there'll be a change in the contract for the fire chief. We may be able to realize some cost savings there, and any cost savings, and I was asked this, asked this directly by the Warrant Committee last week, any cost savings we can incur in any of these budgets, we are working very hard to fund the building and grounds department, sorry, just the grounds department in the DPW. So any sort of savings or anything we can refine and realign, we're trying to get that off the ground this year, no pun intended.
You say the grounds department and the DPW, that's the department that'll take care of all of the towns.
All of the town, yes. And so I sent a copy of the ground study to you, I don't think we're ready to implement it fully. We need to have some conversations with Parks and Recreation, we need to have some conversations with the school committee, and they all fully participated in the study. I just don't think we're at the point we can implement all of it. We've asked Mo to look at that ground study, and he's been working with the Collins Center who developed it, to develop, to come up with a recommendation for what he would need as staffing to do that department. And I believe, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, we were looking at four full-time employees. We are trying to move that forward this year. I don't, I can't guarantee that we can get the four full-time employees, and I also think we need to have a conversation with Parks and Recreation about our plan for what they are moving forward. But any sort of refinement will go towards that line item in this budget. And at a minimum, I need to fund something because we need somebody to cut the grass come July 1st. So I know you're just seeing this tonight, this is a lot of information to digest, so we can talk about it again at your next meeting. If you have additional questions or want to see, you know, further development of how we got to these recommendations on the budget, more than happy to share that. We've been reviewing them all along with the Warrant Committee as well.
Human resource one is a jump.
So we are, in that line item includes all of the cost of living for non-union employees, and it includes the amount of money to implement the Compensation and Classification Plan, which was the market study that we had done, and we have fully changed our job descriptions and where they align to each other.
So what happens, so what happens as, as the pass, it's merit pool, and all that, it's all carried in HR until the budget's passed, then it gets distributed out to all employees. So this is the town's increases across the board.
Yes.
Sort of accounting amount, right?
Exactly. And once we have finalized that, we are still working, I can't tell you how much work Frank and Kathy Van de Boom have put on this class and compensation study over the past two years. Once that is finalized and we know exactly where those increases are going, we'll let Andrew in accounting know and he will distribute those. So that number will go down within this budget as well.
I'm going to ask about 19% on the town report. I'm wondering what entertainment we're going to have during that.
Information Technology, was that, I know I sat in the budget process and there are things that the schools did, were able to install, weren't able to.
This is separate from this, this is operating budget, you sat in on IT for capital budget.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so this is separate, this is the operating budget, and this reflects, I touched on it briefly last week, we are obligated to pay our first full year of the open.gov software implementation, and that is a huge jump for us in the first year, about $55,000. We are also carrying costs because we have a transition between our existing platform and our future platform, so there's some, there's some double cost for the first six months of that contract.
And the Conservation Commission?
Because they now have a full-time conservation agent. They had previously had been a part-time, and then we had only budgeted for six months, we hired them on January 1st to try and make it fit in the budget.
Gotcha.
I should report, I did make a very quick presentation, thank you again to the Board of Health for slotting me in so quickly tonight, and I apologize to Montrose that got pushed off for a little bit for me. I did make a presentation to them this evening about taking their budget. Now that we're three years into having a public health nurse position, I've been working to try and find out, is that where we should be right now? And I think a lot of the friction we had is because we expected our public health nurse to actually function more as a health department administrator or a health department director. So I came up with a proposal today, the Board of Health needs some time to digest it, but I believe we can do a health administrator, and this health department would fall under Kathy McDonald, same as the public health nurse did. Health administrator, which would have very much the same duties as a public health director, a part-time environmental health agent, I can't remember if I notified you, but Bridget Sweet, who has always done our environmental health agent for the last 15 or so years, she is relocating to Florida, and so her contract is ending, so we have the opportunity to bring that in with the cost savings as a part-time employee. I'm proposing moving the public health nurse to a part-time position, and we can maintain the administrative assistant we have in the position without any change to their budget. So they're going to take some time to digest that, but I think it, I think it meets the needs of growing the Board of Health to what we actually would like to move forward without having any increase this year. So we'll, we'll let them digest it, and I believe I'm meeting with them next week for some feedback and reaction.
Okay.
And then although the capital stabilization projects have been approved, the municipal building stabilization projects have been approved, I'm going to push this out to a next meeting. I don't have the presentation where I would like it to be to present to you this evening.
Good? Okay. And then 2025 Annual Town Meeting warrant articles?
Just a couple of changes. I know at the last meeting, I just wanted to give you an updated list, at the last meeting, we had talked about, we'd removed the speed limit, we're going to hold that until the following year. I talked to the attorney today for the private sewer pump station, they are not ready to move forward, and they've asked for a placeholder on the 2026 Annual Town Meeting, so there's just a few that we've taken off. And although it drives the Warrant Committee crazy, I have renumbered a few of them, so check, double-check twice if you're looking for an article because it may have moved its number, so. And at this point, we have 37 articles on the warrant.
And we, we talked today about one that we realized we did not put on.
Yes, you wanted to talk to Mark about that.
So I realized that we did not put on the warrant article addressing the easement that we never filed in, not you, but whoever before you, in 1992, whatever it was. It's just something that, it bubbled up, you're still working on the document, so I definitely want that on this year, I don't want that dragged out another year, so.
Harding, what? Is it not Harding?
No.
No, it's the Kingsbury.
Chris Mill, Chris Miller states the acceptance of the restriction of whatever it's called.
Yeah, it never got voted in back in 1990 or something. It's a simple, like, accept it, and get it off the docket, not let it sit for another year.
It's not a big deal.
So you can spearhead that, that's not something.
Well, you just need to, however you want to get it into the warrant.
So we can, we can open and close the warrant at your next meeting?
Okay.
And I'll have that on the agenda.
Okay, fabulous. I saw a hand go up. Okay. Did you know that's what you're coming from? Oh, you're coming for Chris Mill, this other stuff on here. And other than that, you should be good.
In that context, and FYI, this, we, there's actually a bylaw, bylaws whereby, it was done subsequent to that, it was done during my early tenure, but instead of having to go to town meeting now, you are authorized to accept interests in land which result from a planning board, zoning board, or conservation approval process.
So you're saying we don't need to make this a warrant article?
No, I'm not talking about this one. This one, arguably you could do that, but to be safe, we ought to go to town meeting with this one, but going forward for anything else that arises.
Okay.
And in fact, the board has done those during my tenure on occasion.
Okay. And then one other question, so when we look at some of these warrant articles, the water conservation, so is Concom going to come and present to us, or they're just going to present to the Warrant Committee on that one, or how's that going to play out?
I believe they are scheduled to go before the Warrant Committee to have that discussion on the warrant article.
Okay. I'm sure that Bob and Steve will ask the same question that they asked me.
Have they had the public discussions with the private level?
I don't believe they've, they've started. I know that they have been seeking information, but I don't know, I don't think those have taken place yet.
They just want to get it on.
All right, moving right along. All right, action items, Medfield History Weekend, April 25th to 27th, global approval slash permit for holding events around town contingent on submission of plan to approval from Medfield Police Department, Parks and Recreation Commission. And then Sandwich Board signs unusual downtown transfer station spots plus a fence sign at Medfield State Hospital, I was going to say Medfield, yeah, Medfield State Hospital entrance about tours. So any update from you, Chris, that you want to give on that, or we're good?
Two seconds.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks so much. Chris McQpotts, Seven Curve Street. I'm here on behalf of the Medfield Historical Society, they are serving as the fiscal agent for Medfield History Weekend, this is the third year. As you saw in your material, we have six participating organizations that you're fully aware of, the Historical Society, Peak House Heritage Center, Duane Derby House, Kingsbury Chris Mill, Lowell Mason House, Hannah Adams Women's Club, and also Medfield TV and Memo are helping out with this yet again. And we have a number of other sites that are going to be present for this. I just thought it would be interesting to share just the, sort of the outcome of last year. We had over 400 attendees in all the events throughout the weekend, but that doesn't include the folks that just came to the open houses that we didn't, they didn't buy a ticket, that those, that number is just for ticketed events. And Jeff and Dick can certainly attest to what they saw at their local, their spots. And we didn't, we never organized this as a fundraising event, it was really just to raise public awareness about the wonderful historical assets that we have in town, but yet, at the end of the day, we were able to actually distribute a little bit of money to each of the historical groups, which was really wonderful. You know, every little bit goes a long way, and it was roughly either $800 or $400 each, you know, just a little bit, nice tip to the hat, tip, tip of the hat. And then what a nice benefit too is a lot of the groups ended up getting volunteers because of it, you know, so it was just a lot of great benefits. Nothing's really different this year compared to last year. Richard De Sorg is going to come back, he's going to do a walking tour, he wants to do the other side of the cemetery, so the more, sort of the more recent side compared to the historic side. Everything else is pretty much the same, we haven't set the location for the kickoff event, but that'll be more of a, sort of a private venue, which won't impact anything. The one idea that is under exploration, and I say could not, may not pan out, is we may try and do some, like, sort of pop-up performances so that people in town, like on Sunday or when the trolley's going by, you know, for example, having actors dressed up as straw hat factory workers sitting on the sidewalk actually making straw hats, just to make, you know, something like, something that it would make it a little bit more fun as, you know, as people are going through town. You know, it's been fun doing the writing for the Historical Society newsletter and learning all about the performances that used to be in this building, the movies and the musical performances, so maybe we have an opera singer standing on the, on the front lawn of the townhouse, you know, on Sunday.
As long as it's not me, we're good.
Yeah, so.
Hypocritical, it's the most plausible reason to get.
Like I said, I'm not sure if this is going to pan out, I've been talking to the gazebo players and figuring out who might participate in this, and if we decide to do something, I'll come back to get that permission if we need it, but I just thought for the fun of it, I'd like you to know what's, what we're trying to do this year. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Assuming no questions?
I have a semantic question as I was reading this. This is asking for a global approval slash permit, is that, is that what we've always done, or is that a term I didn't, I didn't, it didn't register in my memory, which might say more about my memory than anything else? So is this a different approval than what we've done in the past?
This was Mark's term.
This is your term.
Ah. He didn't think of it for two years.
Blanket different than global?
It's like, it's analogous to memo coming in, we're going to have Medfield Day on us, not date, is that okay? And yes, it's okay. As opposed to a lot of this, you really don't need specific approvals for, and then there's some items that do, like. And then there's some items that do, like public safety, traffic, that sort of thing. So it's referencing the police.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the extended wait limit discussion we had last year around Dale Street. And these things can creep in. So this is just a term of legal art that you've introduced to upgrade our.
It's not a term of legal anything.
All right. It sounds very much like my global entry form that I have to fill out when I go to Europe.
You know, people use different words, and then it's like, no, it's just the same thing. It's like, why did you change the words? Okay, got it. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the global permit for holiday events around town contingent on submission of the plan for, to the plan to approval from Medfield Police Department and Parks and Recreation Commission for the Medfield History Weekend from April twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh.
And the place in the.
And the Sandwich Boards.
Oh, you only do both.
It's all for the same cause.
Separately approved. Boy, this is really a global approval. And we approve the Sandwich Board Signs in the Usual Downtown/Transfer Station Spots Plus a Fence Sign at MSH Entrance About Tours.
So I'll second that if we make it American permitting instead of global permitting. I don't want it this.
I accept that motion, amendment to the motion.
We're the only Medfields in the whole globe, so why not?
Make Medfield great again.
You got a second, saw all those in favor? All right. Vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the FY twenty-five.
We didn't vote.
We did.
We did.
Let the record show that it was unanimous enthusiastic approval, even though the vote was slipped through without clear enunciation.
I thought you said aye aye.
I did, I would have.
Vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the FY twenty-five Firefighter Equipment Grant Agreement.
Yes, this is the eighteen thousand dollars that Chief Carrico. I believe this is replacement for the boots, gloves, et cetera.
Their equipment is so expensive, and he's always getting grants for it.
I vote, I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the FY twenty-five Firefighter Equipment Grant Agreement. The amount of the grant is eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Money must be spent by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Vote to authorize the fire chief to sign the ambulance service affiliation agreement with BMC Community Hospital, doing business as Good Samaritan Medical Center.
And this is the annual agreements that you sign.
I move that we authorize the prior chief to sign the ambulance service affiliation agreement with BMC Community Hospital, doing business as Good Samaritan Medical Center.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Vote to sign the contractor authorized signatory form for the fifty thousand dollar state budget earmark for improvements at the Dwight Derby House, Medfield Historical Society Building, and Kingsbury Grissmill, and authorize the town administrator to sign the grant contract to receive the funds. Looks pretty straightforward.
I move. So move.
Wow, Mark's got dinner.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, just want to make sure you're paying attention over the gas. Vote to sign the contract with Health LLC for building envelope repairs at the Dwight Derby House for nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
I move that we sign the contract with Health LLC for building envelope repairs at the Dwight Derby House for nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Work to be completed not later than March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
I see that Jeff Sauter is here, and I don't know if Jeff wants to tell us anything about the Dwight Derby House, as long as you're here.
I just came to sort of your pleasure if you have any questions.
Plus, it's very entertaining to come and watch us.
It's the best Tuesday night.
Now I know you're lying.
I got to find you a list of hobbies.
Vote on Select Board Appointment and Creation of Wayfinding Committee.
Yes, at the last Select Board meeting, you signed the contract to engage with our consultants, and we are looking to announce the creation of a small wayfinding committee to advise us on those selections. And Maria is looking tonight for one of you to serve on it. And then we'll advertise and see what else we have for nominees.
I don't mind. Figure no one's running against me. You got me for another three years, right? This is a good writing campaign. That really pisses people off when they say what we.
I thought you were going to say I'll be one of the three that actually knows their way around this town.
And we will start advertising for members for that and hopefully fill that out at your next meeting.
Are we good with that? I often.
I think we need to confirm.
Yes, I'm going to say I'm not.
Just drift into it when somebody takes.
I wasn't reading the next motion.
Important position of responsibility in town. I move that we appoint Eileen Murphy as membership in the wayfinding committee and authorize the creation of the wayfinding committee by soliciting volunteers.
Do I do it all in favor? Can I vote for myself? I think my name is. All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, I'll recuse myself. Even though I volunteer.
She waited to see how we're going to vote.
Appoint Paul Hinckley as interim tree ward.
Yes, so I'm very sad to let you know that Hinckley has retired as our tree warden and has been the tree warden for as long as I can remember, at least as long as I've been here. We are still trying to determine what our qualifications will be for the next tree warden, if it's going to be somebody from the inside. But in the meantime, we do need to have an interim named. And Mo asked us to name Paul Hinckley as the interim for now.
Okay.
And we'll come back to you once. I anticipate it won't be till after town meeting that we develop our specifications, decide how we're going to handle it going forward.
President reach out.
Yes.
Is this technically Paul Hinckley Jr.?
It's Paul Hinckley who works for the Department of Public Works. Yes. Okay. Yeah, I don't know if he's a junior. I don't think so.
Isn't the other Paul Hinckley?
No, this is Paul Hinckley that works for the DPW. Yeah. Nope, I'm stuck with that forever.
I move that we appoint Paul Hinckley that works for the DPW as the tree warden and express our gratitude to Ed Hinckley for the years of service that he's served as the tree warden.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye aye, excellent. Vote to sign the warrant for the annual town election, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, we have two contested races, and we have a.
Charter amendment.
Charter amendment on the warrant for the town moderator that we voted at town meeting.
Oh, so three-year term.
So the three-year term. So that will also be on the election warrant, and we'll get them posted right away.
And Mike did put his hat in the ring, so he.
Okay, yep.
Very good.
Yes, and that won't take a place in, that will not take effect until the following election. So it'll be twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
Okay, so we vote one term this year. If all goes well, it's three terms the following year. Got it.
Yeah.
It says it right in the.
Okay.
What are the two contested elections?
School Committee and Library.
I move that we sign the warrant for the annual town election on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Vote to accept and authorize town administrator to sign the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant under the Recycling Dividends Program. Town of Medfield will receive a whopping six thousand dollars.
What is the recycling dividends program? Just because.
Is all of the nickels?
No, based on the recycling and the work of TSCAR, we're eligible for a grant from DEP. So it's a, it's a small grant of six thousand. Yep, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I move that we accept and authorize the town administrator to sign the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant under the Recycling Dividends Program. The town of Medfield will receive six thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, one more. Vote to allow a Medfield Middle School Theater Group to post signs at the usual locations from March fourteenth through March twenty-eighth, advertising the middle school production, I Hate Shakespeare. Right.
Anybody out here want to speak against anybody that wants to promote Hating Shakespeare? I move that we approve the item on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Excellent. All right, jump to meeting minutes. We've got two to approve, May twenty-eighth and July fourteenth.
These are the ones from the past.
Yeah, July fourteenth surfaced again.
It only took me three tries, sorry.
Look, I said, I'm pretty sure I've already done this. I'm not going to do it again.
Oh.
You're here to speak against Shakespeare or forehead?
Yes. Haming of the Shrew, Part One. I just wanted to thank the senators and congressmen who came out for the fifty thousand dollars for the, it's big help for all the historic buildings in Medfield, or the three that were involved here. And real quick, how it came about was we've been giving third grade tours for a long time in this town, and these kids are the best. They ask super interesting questions, and they are, they let it, let it ride. And so I asked at the Grissmill how the representatives found out about the historic properties in Medfield. And one of the aides raised their hand. She said, well, I went on the third grade tour. She turned to another young woman beside her, and she said, and I went on the third grade tour. So we have some very educated, well-pronounced kids in this town that go on to do great things and then pay it, pay it forward and pay it backwards with this, with this grant. So I wanted to thank Rebecca Roush for kicking it off. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Do we need to approve the meeting minutes for May twenty-eighth and July fourteenth? Fire away.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and July fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, as annotated and as edited or revised in the submissions that we provided.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
All right, town administrator updates.
I don't have any formal updates for you this evening. We've been pretty much buried trying to get out from underneath the budget and working on the ever-shifting timeframes and amount of money we have to work with. So I have no formal updates for tonight. We'll have a full town administrator update to be published at our next meeting.
So a quick update on next meeting dates. We've got February eighteenth, regular meeting, February twenty-fifth. That is going to be just, is that just the one agenda item more or less?
That is, that is one agenda item. It will be, we have, we will post it for six o'clock. We anticipate the warrant committee will be joining. It will be a select board meeting, though, from six to seven. At seven thirty, the warrant committee does have to move forward, so we're asking that it be held, the select board hold to a ninety-minute timeframe. Somehow, meeting till midnight the other night got them all scared, so.
No more five-hour meeting.
I don't know what the information is.
This won't be the only meeting that we have on this, on this topic. So it's a good introduction, and we're just holding everybody to ninety minutes. So at ninety minutes, the warrant committee is going to come up and remove you from your seat.
They are going to take our name plaques and replace them with their own.
They would like to move forward. So yes, six o'clock on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. And then March, we roll into March fourth, March eighteenth. Or just a reminder, the annual town elections will be March thirty-first. We'll have a meeting April first, April fifteenth, and then a placeholder for the meeting before the annual town meeting, and then annual town meeting on May fifth. All right. Select Board Member Reports. Pete?
So first of all, the Mass Municipal Association held their annual meeting about ten days ago, and I was able to go to two days of it, Friday and Saturday. They've actually added a third day on Thursday, but there didn't seem to be anything for Select Board Members on Thursday. They have information in sessions, and then they also have a huge trade show. And the trade show is often interesting because you can pick up things. I picked up a flyer on cameras on school buses. There's a company that'll put cameras on school buses for free. They take a percentage of the, of the fines. And I guess we're allowed to do this by statute in Massachusetts now. It struck me as a good idea if people are not obeying the law when a school bus is stopped, that they deserve a ticket probably. There was another one that interested me a lot. It was called, I think, Flash Vote or something of that sort, where, did I send that to you, Chris?
I think you did send it.
Yeah. And it basically allows these people for, I don't remember, was it seven thousand a year or something? You, they will find a statistically significant group of residents, three to four hundred residents, that you can then survey up to six times per year to find out what your residents really feel about things. And I've always been told that if you did that sort of market survey scientifically, that you could find out what the town residents really want. And so that's always interested me. So that seemed like a nice idea for seven thousand a year, if you had it. There was one on e-signs, and I had a back and forth about Maria about this, and I'm going to leave this for her, so she'll see that it really is not e-signing of documents. But it's for, and it's for that wayfaring. They put up signs that are like the e-readers, like whatever they call them, the, just the, but it's programmable signs. I had a conversation. I've often thought that Medfield had enough historical structures that it could become a destination town, like historic Deerfield. And so that at the Medfield, at the Massachusetts Select Board Annual Meeting, I sat at a table with the Select Board Member from Deerfield. And so after the lunch, I asked him what sort of revenue or income being a historic Deerfield produces for them, and I didn't get much of an answer, unfortunately. So I still remain convinced that we could attract people to town to come and see our historic sites if we somehow package them and put them forward in some sort of way. There's a new, the people at the New Life Furniture Bank hired a new director, and they asked me to post that on my blog, which I did. And then a conversation ensued, and they invited me to come down to their place. And so I went down and visited their warehouse down in Walpole last week. And it was actually very fascinating to see what they are doing. They are doing just God's work in terms of providing furnishings, nuts, everything for people that are basically, it's like a store. You just walk through with a big pallet, and you just fill up your pallet, and then you, and then they have somebody that delivers it to them. It's just a very nice process. Went to the Medfield Historical Society meeting on doing genealogies last night and learned a little bit about that. And the Medfield Foundation and both the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund are having meetings. They're starting up the, the Medfield Foundation is sort of completing the angel-run finances and getting ready for the upcoming year. And the Legacy Fund is about to start the grant cycle for the twenty twenty-five Legacy Fund Grants. Again, not big amounts of money, but very helpful for the organizations in town that get them. So I actually spent a fair amount of time looking at the issue of PFAS on turf fields in the past week. And I know that, Chris, you had written about this, I think, in your Medfield Insider. Montrose, I don't know, Montrose was going to the Board of Health tonight. I don't know if, did that get resolved tonight, or?
No, they were just there for an update.
Oh, okay. So my, my understanding is, I learned more about it, is that we don't really know the results of PFAS on turf fields at the moment. And it's because of the lack of understanding of the actual risk at the moment that the science hasn't developed sufficiently, so that a lot of towns have declared moratorium. And they just say that it doesn't make sense to permit turf fields if you don't know whether it's going to ruin your water supply. And so that, I guess that's where I'm coming down in my head. I know it's not a select board issue, but I just spent a lot of time thinking about it and talking about it and lobbying my person that I know on the Board of Health that I go to exercise class with on Saturday mornings about it. So and then the last thing that I would just bring up is that I know that we try to have regular meetings with, with all of our different groups in town. And I would just ask that we try to bring in people like the Concom and the Board of Health and the Planning Board and the Zoning Board and maybe the Personnel Board to have sort of regular updates with us. And that's it for me.
I got two, almost as long as the mischief as Pete did there, that one. Number of items, Norwood Hospital had, the general manager of Norwood has taken the lead on trying to rejuvenate or find a new operator for Norwood Hospital. And he's been having weekly updates for a couple of months now. And I've missed most of them, but I caught the one last Friday, which came a day after he'd met with the governor, who apparently expressed her support for the idea of trying to find. The good news is she supports the idea of trying to find somebody to operate Norwood Hospital. The bad news was she said that she thought that he should form a working group to go find an operator. So basically, she supports the idea of trying to find a new operator for Norwood Hospital, which would be beneficial. We're close enough to Norwood that that would be a good thing for us, plus that. We're we're close enough to Norwood that that would be a good thing for us. Plus, that used to be one of the hospitals that the fire department relied on. So that would be a good thing. But it looks like the way that would happen is she kind of kicked it down to him and anybody that's working with him to try to find an operator. So he kind of said, Well, that's not what we do, but I guess that's what we're going to have to figure out how to do. So we've been, you know, I haven't been directly involved with the group in terms of being vocal. I don't think anybody in town has been associated with the effort, but it looks like at least somebody had headed by the General Manager of Norwood is trying to do something on that. I got the MBTA Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow morning with a Zoom call. Good news on that front that we heard, I think, in Mass Municipal, that the MBTA basically notified the legislature this past summer that they had virtually exhausted their entire reserve fund. They have a hundred thousand dollars left on a multi-billion dollar budget to make their FY twenty five budget balance. So they found they use the reserve fund to pay, I think it was like five hundred million dollars went into the budget in order to support the budget for FY twenty five, which at first I thought was completely fiscally irresponsible, but from a political standpoint, they did that to keep the key running. Right now, with a projection in FY twenty six, they'd have a six hundred million dollar deficit. And over the next four or five years, that grows to about a billion dollar deficit. The good news is it appears that the governor and the legislature both recognize the issue and they're trying to do things to address it. So the the political card that got played was we're going to tell you we're getting through FY twenty five, and after that, we probably would be bankrupt because the problem is going to be so big. There's nothing to do. The legislature gets it. The governor gets it. So presumably, that'll be a a good that'll get move in a good direction. Sat in for the town, the town hall call that Jake Akkiglass had on the YB caucus. It was the people that were there were almost all housing advocates. So it wasn't really I felt like I was maybe the only person that was there that wasn't in some housing authority. Speaking personally about the things that he supported. I understand what he's trying to do, but he thought the the recent real estate, the housing development legislation in the state was great. He thinks ADUs are good. We need to find ways to have even more ADUs. And I disagree with the idea that I basically, I think you're undercutting zoning by letting somebody put up a second house and you're inviting the Black Rocks of the world. And I don't think he sees that. That was one point. The other interesting point is he kept talking about urban housing. And I didn't want to. I just didn't want to jump into this conversation with seventy three people there. But if he's thinking urban housing, then that's, you know, our legislation is a blanket law for the entire state. So it was just an interesting, you know, perspective and his choice of words was intriguing to me because I understand trying to fix some of the urban stuff, just not sure it fits very well here. I went to the OPEB Trust Fund meeting on, what was it, last Friday or the thirtieth, Thursday? I'm now the chair again. And one of the things that one of the it was a quick meeting, but that's fine. One of the points that came up in that that Steve Callahan raised is the concerns about the trends in healthcare insurance costs. He asked the question, Are we putting enough money each year into OPEB to insulate ourselves from possible surges in the healthcare insurance costs? And I think that was a so far, the answer is yes, we're continuing to increase the percentage of our total liability that we have covered with our contributions. But it's a and presumably, it should get easier because the more you have in, the more you're going to see as a return rather than money that you have to put in. But he he just flagged that as an interesting question. It's not a problem yet, but I think it's a valid question to be asking. Administratively, Christine, you asked me two meetings ago if I would update the score sheet. I have the updated score sheet. So I'll I can I brought two copies of it. This is simple.
Yeah.
Because for two things. Number one, we changed your compensation. So the bonus is not dependent on that.
It is. This is.
This is the last year.
Yes.
This is last year. So these these are the goals from July first of twenty three to June of twenty four.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
It's the world swirls around me all the time. Did they? So I have my copy of the of the memo that you sent with your self-assessment accomplishments. The you two, you two both should already have those as well.
Everybody should have it. I sent it out to everybody last summer.
I have a file.
For sure. If you don't have it, let me know. I have my copy. It's all stapled together for my my version of it. So I can get anybody a copy that needs to learn. Christine, you you can just send it.
I can resend it out. Yeah, it's not a problem.
Anyway, have it.
I think it might actually be on the website.
Okay.
I think it might be, but I'll let you know.
I also signed up. I don't know if you guys get the Council on Foreign Relations. They run webinars and they have a subset of theirs, which is local government. I don't know how I got picked up on it, but I occasionally will get introduced invited to these webinars. And a lot of times they're pretty good because it's, you know, it's it's a national organization, but the topics are sort of geared toward local government. So I they had one on techno. It was technology and clean energy innovation was the topic. And they brought somebody who works in that area was the guest speaker. He he forget his name. He had a previous government position. And he made some intriguing comments that that caught me. They actually reinforced something I've thought for a long time. He made the comment that whether or not the United States gets to net zero doesn't matter. And what he was saying was, we've made so much progress toward getting to net zero that the real issue around carbon in the atmosphere, the global atmosphere, is a concern about China, about India. I think he mentioned Brazil. And his his point wasn't, so don't worry about it, US. He's saying focusing on us getting even further down doesn't do us doesn't do the world any good. What we should be doing as a country is finding ways to develop the tech the carbon control technology and then give it to these countries so that they can more easily implement solutions that'll make a big difference in in carbon entering the atmosphere. I thought that was interesting. The other interesting thing he did that he he mentioned I didn't agree with is he basically made the claim that if you only took one percent of all the farmland in America and converted it to solar farms, you could provide all the electricity that we need purely around solar. First off, I don't think that's technically correct, but I'm not sure. I've certainly read some articles that would take great issue with that. And and the the environmental issues around solar panels, he sort of dismissed as manageable and small and not a big deal. But on top of that, the damage that the right now, putting up large scale solar farms on arable land is is the twenty first century equivalent of they pave paradise and put up a parking lot. So, you know, there's great places for solar panels, roofs, parking lots and things like that. And our landfill, if we ever go our turn, you know, our cap landfill would be another one. But the idea of just being able to convert farmland, I didn't buy that, but that was the case he made. Anyway, interesting webinar, a little more nuanced in the positions. And I I like it when I hear somebody who's more nuanced in their positions because this tells me their thinking. Let's see, I went to the MMA Annual Meeting as well. I went to the Learning Lab on Cost Effective EV Charging on Friday, which was it was the the group that was putting it on was not associated with Eversource, but they were providing they were offering a similar program to what Eversource offered to us with our our charging. I asked them a question about the charging software because that's not something that they worry about too much. And there was a guy in the room in the crowd. Turns out, he's very active in in EV charging, and he made some comments. So I went and talked to him at the end. And this guy has all these, he he could look up our, like, he asked me what we're charging for electricity. I said, Yeah, I don't know. I didn't think it was a whole either. It was like twelve cents a kilowatt hour. It's thirty five cents. And he said, No, that's that's where you probably need to be. That's a great, great place. He looked at he looked at our he he looked up our chargers and he said, You have level three chargers. You're ahead of the game. So kudos to the Energy Committee for what they've brought into town. He also looked up the 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 charging stations on a different app and found someone had made a complaint that a non EV car was parked at one of the charging stations at the schools. Then we we don't have.
I was gonna say.
No, not here, not here, not here. But somebody had filed a complaint and he said, You know, you you park there. That's two hundred fifty dollar fine. So I'm not sure about the the laws around that. I think we've used a softer, a softer or, you know, more flexible stick than that one so far. But this guy could find out a heck of a lot about our town and our charging stations. And he he mentioned another software application that will let you help you find if you have an EV, helps you find charging stations, but also tells you whether the charging station is being used. So I thought that was this guy knew an awful lot. And bottom line is, he said, You guys are sort of ahead of the game, and it looks like you're making good decisions. That was nice to hear because they were pushing level two chargers. So. Yeah. I then went to what's driving the cost of public education. And the the super, one of the panelists was the Superintendent of the PBD School System. And he mentioned that ten or fifteen years ago, they had six psychologists, I think it was six. And now they have twenty six, which was sort of an alarming statistic. But he also mentioned that's, and I think he was talking about the high school, not the entire school system. Seventy five percent of the students are receiving therapy. That rang major, you know, we we've got some major if that's happening, there's major problems. And it's not because we haven't hired enough psychologists. There's something much bigger going on. If that's the kind of we don't have that. But that that shocked me. It really did. The from there, I missed the my business meeting first because I went to the wrong hotel and figured out when I got to the fifth floor of that and there were only hotel rooms. It's probably where the meeting was being held. So I went across the Omni where I was supposed to be, but by the time I got up there to check in, they said, Oh, the meeting's over. And but breakfast is something served. So I had a very relaxed breakfast and then made it back for the opening of of the the Saturday session. So my comment about the the MMA Annual Meeting is there were a few, after having gone for eight years, I thought I knew how to do it. I basically, they changed because we were at the Convention Center rather than Hines. They rejiggered the schedule a bit. Some of the things, I kind of looked at the schedule like Pete did, set out Thursday. I never go on Thursday because it's just sort of, you know, it's if you were there staying for the weekend, it would be different. But some of the sessions were there on Thursday, the the techno, the expo part, you know, the trade show. I didn't go. I wasn't that conscientious about going on Friday because I thought I would go on Saturday. And then when I walked into the hall, it was empty. So it was like, oh, so they changed that, too. The trade show is open on Thursday and Friday, not Friday and Saturday. So I got I got cross threaded a couple of times.
You were not the only one.
Yeah. The good news is I spent forty five minutes wandering around the B C E C to get beyond the exhibition floors that I've always been on. And it did take me about forty five minutes to go around to finally get up to the grand ballroom. It's a very impressive building. And you will get exercise if you do like we were walking around. You you put a couple of miles in, I think, by the time you get back. From there, whoops.
The size of that convention center is just phenomenally vast.
From there, I voted in favor of all of the resolutions, just so you know, voting. And the issue is they're long. There's always things that I disagree with personally in those resolutions, but they're resolutions. They're not law. And so it was like, I just let it go. And then finally, the last thing I went to on Saturday afternoon was Making AI Your Partner, which was interesting, which was an interesting, it's telling you about Chat GPT and other things, mostly all AI related. The biggest thing I took away from it was these experts were saying you want to be very careful about what you put on the public side of the AI. There's you have these things where you can go to web or you can go internal. And I always assumed that if you wanted to go get stuff from the web, you had to choose web. You don't. You can go into internal. And what they're basically saying is, so if you want AI to use your town data about something, you want to stay internal when it's doing all that analysis because if you go web, it becomes a public document that anybody can get. So there's one person there that had done a study on on his DPW on the towns vehicles. But he did it on the website. So basically, you could look up that town. You could find out all, not that that's a problem, but you could find out all kinds of information about that town's vehicles because of the way they handle it. So that was a big part. And then the other part was when they were trying to do the demonstrations. They couldn't get it to work really well. So so there was a certain user friendliness there that but and it was also just they were on the network. That's it.
All right. Well, just so who knows, mine won't be that long. These guys gave you a lot of data. I had a personal stuff I had to take care of. So a couple, a couple of things. Our Affordable Housing Trust meeting, we moved to March, so we did not have our February one. The MMA, I made it there first, the Friday morning introduction with the governor and the Lieutenant Governor and Sigal Sennol Gupta, which that was actually inner, that was good, interesting. I sat in the dealing, and I may not use the the title of this correctly, but but Jamie Jamie Kenny, Kenny, Jamie. So I sat in hers, where it's basically dealing with challenging individuals. And lesson learned is just cut to the quick, be straightforward, don't pussyfoot around. If you've got people that you're having problems with, be clear, be concise, follow the rules, but don't deviate. Just and it was it was kind of a standard routine between Jamie and.
They perfected it.
Yeah, yeah. But you know what? It was, listen, I'm one of those people. I'm not going to candy coat it, like, get to the point, like.
So I have a question. Did anybody go to Brittany's?
Frank and I did.
Okay, okay. I was tempted to, but it was like, but I wanted to see this other one.
We went to supporter.
All right, okay.
He was asked by the Mass Municipal Association to present on a panel about internships for high school and college kids. So, yeah, it was really great. In fact, if you look at the new Mass Municipal that came out this today, there's a great picture of her.
Okay. We did have, I think I can say this because we we kicked off our collective bargaining with the police. So that was great. And then I received communication last two days from the Executive Board at Montrose. So there's definitely some, you know, there's some concern with their entity in town that have come to reach out to the Select Board with some frustrations with how some meetings have been going on in terms of not getting timely manner. It's it's it's, I'll be honest, it's not good. And it's it's not, it's not a reflection how we should be doing things. I think I've already reached out to Christine. I I have all intention of reaching out and having a one on one to figure out. You know, we we are not sending people in circles. We have many, many people who have been involved in this not living that that are saying they've never seen anything done with the magnitude of what's going on in our town with being sent around and around. Pete, I heard you just make some comments about PFAS, which you have every right to have your opinions there. I think what the what the school is trying to ask the town is just give us what you want. But please don't make public statements that I hate the following, so I'm never going to vote for it because no one should ever be on a board and being in a voting position where you have an opinion and you're never going to waiver from that regardless of what data comes forward because you've already jaded the the so at that point, just recuse yourself. And so I, you know, I listened because as I said to him, you're you're a entity in town. We are elected board. We appoint everyone in the commissions. So it's extremely important that if you are having frustrations, you bring them to us. And I'll leave it at that. But, you know, I don't want any any business, any resident in this town to feel like they're getting the run around and all they're asking for is questions to be answered, and it's not happening. And that's not good. So I will leave it at that.
I think you should probably explain your comments to whoever, whatever boards you're talking about. I'm sure they'd want to know.
I will. I'll do it one on one. I'm not going to do it now and have somebody sit.
Well, you've made it a public statement now. You've cast aspersions on some town boards. It's the Concom and the and the Board of Health that are dealing with it, I think. So.
And Planning Board and others, but Planning Board, you know, they they kept it very timely. And there's a frustration that there's been eleven meetings. There's a significant amount of money that's been spent. And they're they're still don't have a checklist that says simply, These are the things that we need. Every time they feel like they're about to reach the finish line, they get pushed back. So it's not how we should be running things. And 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 it it does bother me that, but.
I would agree that, first off, the general statement that you made that the town is doing that has to get fixed. But I I would agree, you don't, you want to get the problem fixed and you don't need to run the issues up the flagpole for everybody when it would probably be more effective to deal directly with the boards, commissions, committees, or whatever it is that are.
And all I want to do is, in fairness to Montrose, is they did reach out and said, You know, we 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 need you as a select board. Understand that there, you know, we we have people who come to us and say, Like, we've done this in twenty somewhat other towns. We've never experienced what we're experiencing. And, you know, can you help? So that's I have all intention of of doing that. And I just want them.
Montrose is in twenty other towns. I don't know what they're talking about.
Pete, but there are consultants that represent other towns. There are businesses, there are companies that install things all around the the towns and country. So they have their their experiences. And it's unfortunate right now that Medfield has not been a very good experience.
Well, and you, so I guess, you know, I caution you because you're buying into Montrose's explanation of this and.
No, this is not on the agenda this evening.
I know. That's why I'm gonna stop it right now. So and so I I'm bringing up because I got a phone call. I'm sharing that. I'm leaving it at that.
You're advocating.
I've sat through many of the the conservation meetings, so I've witnessed some of these things firsthand. So I'm going to leave it at that. things firsthand, so I'm going to leave it at that. I think you just advocated for PFAS yourself, you made your statement, so.
Yeah, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, and I'm just sharing what was just shared with me, and I've sat through some meetings. I've actually sat through the last two meetings that they've had, so I'm not just doing this